Good evening, Byram Hills. I would like to call the order, excuse me, call the meeting's order so we can go into executive session to discuss 2.1 Negotiations Matter BHTA. So the time is now?
Seven forty.
Seven forty, and we're gonna go into exec and we'll see you soon.
Motion.
I need a motion to go into exec.
I'll move second.
All in favor. Thank you, see you soon. Good evening, Byram Hills, and welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Ed Meeting. The Board went into executive session at seven fourteen to discuss item 2.1 Negotiations Matter BHTA. So can we please rise for the release?
I salute you.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So apparently you don't have any revisions or adoptions of the agenda, do we? Okay, any comments from the public? See none, I will move on to consent agenda. Six point one personnel, seven point one CSE, sub CSE, CPSE recommendations, and eight point one business. I have a motion. All in favor.
That's what I get to say. What am I gonna say, everyone? A really special thing just happened. Although we whisked through all of that, we are really proud and excited about the Board has just granted tenure to our high school social worker and amazing dedicated individual to students in our high school and in our FSP program, Allison Muley. Allison works in the FSP program, which is arguably one of the toughest places to be. The rewards of the amazing individuals who are in that program are dividends that you can't get in any other way in life. But the work that you have to put into that to help each student achieve at the level we know they can achieve and to coordinate with teachers and parents and outside support networks for these kids to get them to call Byram Hills a place that they want to come to every day is remarkable. These are kids who likely would not be here in school if we didn't have this program and we, in particular, did not have the people that we have in it. I know you have an incredible support system, but that's a system that you helped to build with your teacher and your teacher who's here, all these people here to celebrate you and your aide. And you and I have had a lot of interactions about, somehow these kids usually find me to. And we've had a lot of conversations about students in that class and, you know, watching students as they're growing and emerging and taking on new challenges and the pride. I'm thinking of one student in particular right now, but the pride that you feel about that student who is really carving a place in this world for him or herself is pretty extraordinary. So I, I'm grateful, you know, when, when we had, have had students in the past. I remember being an assistant principal at the high school and the assistant principals were that person for students in the high school, but the problem was we had no ability to help them, right? We just cared and loved to them, but we didn't have the ability to watch them grow and shine. And that's the real difference between me doing that and you doing this. So we are so grateful that you are here and that program is off the charts because you're in it.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And nice to have Jorge here with us as well. And, you know, this is, my predecessor used to say this, and, you know, I don't know, because I'm not a lawyer, but you are. It's sort of like becoming partner, right? That you have now been recognized, although we really recognized you when we put you in perhaps one of the most difficult courses that we have. But it's a recognition that you demonstrated a partnership to Byram. And I know you and everybody who's here with you, these are really great models. These are people who are also really invested in this work. It doesn't matter, you know, Mary Beth, I could be upstate New York in a town I've never heard of and she happens to be there to watch this specific sporting event also. You know, you're with people who live, who live Byram and we're glad you're living in with us, so thank you.
Congratulations.
And more accolades to come because we're gonna swoop you in with the next tenure class.
Oh, really?
So we're gonna do celebrations with you again, right?
Thank you.
All right.
No. So come and get some candy. Yay! We will never ask you to stay for the rest of the year. Even though we have our principals here and they're gonna be sharing initiatives and they're building, I think that you and Chris talk enough.
Scott.
Scott Levy is on the video. Look at you, leaving flowers and gifts. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. Jorge, nice to see you.
Jorge, you can be correct.
Just so you guys know.
Oh, there's Scott.
Budget hearing?
No, 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 no. This is over the conference?
No. I used to do it when.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the main event tonight, special report. It is the beginning of the budget season, so here we are.
Best time of the year, right?
Kelly's time to shine, but you want me to shine? Budget hearing one, nine point one, purpose of hearing, overview and budget process, over to you.
Thank you. I thought we'd start with the principals, get them going, get them out of here. They gotta get up bright and early. So we wanna start maybe with the high school and just, yeah, hey.
Wow, we're already right in this.
Everybody's excited, right?
I think it's really good for the, for the principals to be here tonight. When you think about the principal's budget, it's, it's a miniscule part of this bigger budget. But the initiatives are so important and that's what they're really here to talk about tonight. And these initiatives expand across the buildings, which are.
So Kelly started with me because I annoyed him so many times with so many calls during this process and he just wants to get rid of it.
No, I know how hard it is to.
But you have to stay and listen, everyone.
I'm pretty sure mine will probably be the largest operating budget because we do have the most students. So this process every year in my mind is one that really ties together all of the things that we do from looking at the courses that we're gonna be offering to the programs that we have established to looking at staffing even. And it really is all based on student enrollment. And Kelly will send along the number based on the student enrollment and we don't just take what we had last year and just say, oh, we're just gonna add a little bit to it. It really is based on that student number that we have coming in. And so next year, we actually have a reduction in our overall enrollment from seven hundred and forty students down to six ninety-five anticipated. So with that, we always go back and we start with the mission and we look at that idea of means, opportunity and knowledge from the mission in terms of how that is represented with the budget. And like Jen said, coming up in Byram Hills, one of the things that we always learned about and always tried to enforce was that our incoming ninth graders had as many, if not more, opportunities than our graduating seniors. And so with that, we never wanna cut programs that we know are really working or thriving. We wanna offer courses to them that make more sense after graduation. We wanna make sure that we have the right people in the right places, just like with Allison in FSP and Mary Beth there. So the operating budget really does support all of those little things that help the high school go from great to greater. So overall, from last year, this is a reduction of one point four nine percent. Kelly won't let me say one point five percent. So one point four percent reduction in the overall operating budget. Now, some of the highlights that I like to speak about that this budget supports are those things that help our programs and the different curricular offerings that we have. The leadership programs that we have, I am really proud of because since it's become part of the mission, it's no longer something that, you know, we, we keep in the back of our mind. We actually have to aspire to in everything that we do. So the mentor programs, peer leadership, chem, computer science and RTA programs, along with Big Brother and Big Sister, those actually speak to the mission. And we know from those kids who are in those programs, when they are done, we have given them leadership tools that they can take with them. Our flexible support program, again, as Jen mentioned, this budget will support those students who might otherwise have to be, you know, going somewhere else and we get to keep them in district. And we get to support them because this is their home. Our LCC program, fully embedded in the overall school community. I think every year, the, the biggest turnout that we get for any one of our programs is the Unified Basketball Game and it's a place where, you know, I shed tears every year. Our Science Research Program, year in and year out, continues to support our students in their research and whether it be submitting to Regeneron or competing in contests and presenting around the country, it really is something to say that our students are actually adding to the overall, overall knowledge of mankind. Our startup program, again, in its third year, continues to foster that environment for students who might not have a, a place otherwise. We have kids who are now finding ways to express themselves through that program. Our Global Scholars Program as well, we continue to support that. The feedback that we get from our students in that program when they come back from college is, they still feel like maybe they're from the Armand bubble, but a little bit of that bubble has been popped because of that program. Again, our core academic areas, we're offering over twenty-four, we're offering twenty-four AP courses. We, this budget will go towards textbooks, different technology tools, classroom supplies that support all of our, our programs. Special education from our resource rooms to our, to our new learning lab, these will be supported as well. Fine Arts Guidance and Physette, right? This budget goes to support all of the faculty in those programs, whether they need to go for professional development or even supplies in those areas. Extracurricular activities, we are proud that we have over fifty clubs and activities that enrich the student experience. And if you're a kid who's going home on the bus, I say it all the time, every day after school, it's almost criminal. We have so many things that we offer students and there are so many entry points. With that, I'd like to just take a brief pause with Tim if we could because we figured it would be a good time to speak about our new student government. This year, we are really proud that we had peer elected student government and all of the things that they've been doing, from getting the dance up and running to creating the new student government constitution. And one of the things that they're really excited about going into next year is the ex officio member of the Board of Education. So Tim and I and Jen have been speaking about ways that we could really support that, but that would also sort of protect those students so that they're not overwhelmed by that position. And we think we came up with something good.
So I'll first go over the requirements. I reviewed this with you in December, the December Board Meeting. Governor Hokel signed a new law that will take effect next year, which requires that all school districts, all high schools must have at least one high school student serving as an ex officio school board member. And some of the requirements include, get these up here, that they're entitled to sit with the board members at the public meeting, may be able to participate in other events as per your direction, will not be allowed to attend executive sessions or other private meetings not open to the public and cannot receive compensation. So those are some of the requirements and not entitled to vote as well. And then also.
That seems to be giving them a lot of responsibility.
So they're here just learning about the process, I suppose.
Yes, it is about learning about the process.
So some of the requirements, or the requirements include that students must have attended high school for at least one year prior to serving, which means that they can't be freshmen if they've been in Byram Hills. They'll have to have attended their ninth grade year at the high school. Students can be chosen in a variety of ways. So we're meeting with Chris, through conversations with Chris and the establishment of this new student government, Chris has some recommendations which we can discuss a bit. And then we will bring this to the policy committee to talk about whether we wanna put this in policy and if so, what is the exact language around it. So Chris, do you wanna speak to your recommendation?
Yeah, I think it's a, a great opportunity because so many things happen at the Board of Education that determine the overall functioning of the district, but I don't know that many of our students actually understand that. So thinking about giving more students the opportunity to actually see that and then to go back and report on it, I think that gives a lot of different lenses on what this, what this organization and governing body does. So the thought was, we know that if we have students who are running for that elected government positions, that if we put it out there that one of the responsibilities would be to sit as an ex officio member, then they would be going in knowing full well that that would be part of the responsibility. A lot of the colleagues that I've spoken to have just said, oh, they've invited kids into their office, had a conversation and then said, congratulations, you're now on the ex officio member. We really wanted it to come from the students. Now, going back to our work with Challenge Success, we're also really sensitive to how oversubscribed some of our students have been. And we don't wanna put a burden just on one student to have to be coming to the board meetings. We know that we have a lot of people who participate in after-school athletics or different clubs and activities that have a lot of responsibility. We wanted to get the, the most chance for students to be on the board while not being overwhelmed with it. So we have our four elected senior representatives and that's president, vice president, treasurer and secretary. Now, they are working through right now the Constitution and we are pretty sure that they are going to hold elections for the upcoming school year this spring. And in that way, we would be able to have those officers in a position so that they could start out meeting, going to the Board of Ed meetings at the beginning of the year. And then what we would do is we would just look at the board meetings. We would take feedback from Jen, Tim, Gina and Kelly about when they would actually be needed at the meeting. And then we would just divvy it up based on their schedules and we feel that that's a fair way.
Chris, that process is what makes being an ex officio board member amazing, right? The fact that you are, that you put that amount of time into kids who are serving in a student government position in their school, that there is an election process, that, and the election process isn't just like a single ballot process.
Oh, no. No, yes, we, so I'll give a shout out to our student Alex Lewis, who is a junior. And as soon as he heard that we were having a peer elected student government elections, he came to me with a proposal to do ranked choice voting. And I didn't know anything about ranked choice voting, but he's a student who is really passionate about, about voting, elections, democracy and being able to find the way where, where the electorate have the, the, the most powerful voice. And so it's another thing about Byram Hills where you find students who really have in-depth knowledge about things that I never, ever actually thought about. So he spoke to me, he showed the math behind it, he ran it by our assistant principals and the election was held. We were able to work with Kevin Gudati in technology. We were able to do ranked choice voting. And in that way, the students, there's basically multiple rounds of voting within the general voting. And so you have runoffs within the general ballots. And it really is a, a way that people have elected people that they could support. So it's not just a half and half or whoever gets to the, the majority first, so. Ranked choice voting, very good for Byram Hills and, and it really came out where a lot of the students really felt good about the people who were, were elected, so.
That's amazing.
Chris, thank you. We'll bring this back to the policy committee for Scott.
Just, just one other quick points or raise, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can hear. We'll repeat it.
That, Ed, as whenever it is determined who the student or students will be that sit on the board, we should probably think about as a board, the right like orientation process to put them through, just to give them some background on board governance, on what to expect and what the meetings are like because they'll be sitting, and they'll, they, they contribute to the meetings, but it's really helpful to have things like any board member, once they're elected, go through that process. So we should just think about that as well.
So just to reiterate for the community, if you couldn't hear Scott, he was saying that once the students are selected, that the board should really look at how we're going to train those students about board governance and, and the role of board members. Similar, very similar to what we do when we take on a new board member.
When we do, after the organizational meeting in early July, we take on a new board member. They have almost two months until the next board meeting.
Yep.
That's great.
A little smoother transition for them to come to their first board meeting.
We might also recommend training through, you know, the SP and. Yeah. I think we can, we must probably come up with something.
I wonder if they're gonna offer any training, considering that all of New York State has to do this.
Yeah, we know somebody at T D S, right?
And then the other thing is maybe we can put this as part of the civic seal of readiness, if that, you know, this could be. Only positive things to say, Mr. Walsh.
Yes, and, and we're also gonna do training on what they report out.
Yeah.
Because, you know, thinking of some of my own children, how was the board meeting? Fine. And that's what they would get. So we wanna make sure that they are reporting out the things that are important to the rest of the student body and it's, it's important for them to hear it as well.
Would they have a column in the, you know, how you have a newspaper at school? Would that be something?
Yeah, that would be a great connection to have it in the Oracle, yeah.
There's all these things to consider.
Yeah, I think it's just a great opportunity and again, it expands the, the leadership potential of our, of our student body as well.
It's more of an exciting world of budget.
Yes.
Thank you for embracing.
A nice segue.
That's good, right, embracing.
So, yeah, just to finish up, I do want to again thank the Board of Education for always supporting the high school. I, I did want to say a thank you to the B H E F and the P T S A, who again helped take us from great to greater. More so now with the upcoming renovation to the Learning Commons. We're very excited to have that and I know that the Board of Education's support made that possible. So although that doesn't show up in my budget line, it is something that really does enhance the high school and it's all taken together, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tough follow.
I know, I don't have any visuals. First, I do wanna also thank you for your support of H C Credit and to the P T S A and also the B H E F. What a difference all of your support has made for our students. I thought back on my presentations in years past and we spent a lot of time talking about SEL and community development and that's been very important and it still continues. I thought this year I would share a bit and give a lens into our work academically, how we support rigor, how we make our curriculums robust and also how we align our work because I think that's very important in the middle school. I think it's important in all our schools, but when you think about the middle school, you have two teams that could be compared. You have a real community where kids are very aware of how they're doing and who they're with. So I, I think it's a great opportunity to talk about how the budget supports our work to align instruction, how it aligns assessment, how it aligns our practice. When, you know, in years past, I have mentioned Anne Burgender in math because that's been transformational in terms of how six twelve we work with our students. We've also talked about ICT and special education and the G R consultants, that's also very important. It still goes on. I thought I would highlight today to illustrate the importance of our work, the Science Department. When we think about what they've done this year and in the past, we've had the New York State Next Gen Science Standards come into play. And so they've spent some time looking, unpacking the standards and considering how it affects and how we need to develop our curriculum. And they've been doing that for years. But if I was to talk about our budget and how it's happened this year and looking forward for next year, we, the budget helps us bring in consultants so that we can unpack these standards with experts and help us learn a little bit more because they're very new and our teachers, as, as good as they are, need some guidance from some experts. We also need the budget to support us so that we can develop the curriculum, the practices, the assessments together. And when you think about middle school, you're really thinking about the importance of a six, eight progression. So what they're doing in sixth grade will support seventh and eighth grade and they know what, they're talking about common language, common practices and even the assessments that they're utilizing. But you're also talking about in middle school, how there are some students on Team A and some students on Team B and we wanna make sure that they have assured experiences. How when you look at science, you know that those teachers have worked together and they have built up their practices together so that those experiences, whether you're on A or B, are very, very similar and quite often in the middle school, they're lockstep. So this year, coming up, we're gonna continue working with a consultant, Dr. Eddie Cohen. Dr. Cohen has helped our teachers, our science teachers, unpack the standards, as I mentioned, and also take a look at the skills required. For example, and I'm looking a little bit at my notes to make sure I got the lingo right, a skill such as science and engineering practices. And that's where our students will have to find a solution to real world problems. So Dr. Eddie sat down with our teachers, both grade level wise, so two teachers working, say, in seventh grade, and also has sat down with all of our teachers together in the Science Department and talked about what that looks like in each of their grades and how they're going to bring those standards and those skills and how they're gonna help the students, for example, really take a look at what would the steps be to those, addressing those real world problems. That expertise and that budget support really keeps our teachers moving forward. I also think it's important to, to note, our teachers take a look at their assessments. They look at what they're doing and the components. There is a claim, reason and evidence that goes on with science. And that's really critical that they have a very similar practice, sixth, seventh and eighth. Because the truth is that we also know the robust science curriculum that they're gonna be walking into in the high school and they need to make sure that their students are prepared. With all these changes comes resources that are necessary. So the budget also provides, in this case, our science students and our children and our teachers with the resources necessary to make sure that we are on the top of our game. Sorry, I do have, just like everyone else, battling a little bit of a cold. In also talking with the teachers, they highlighted the point in science, how they take a look at something like crosscutting concepts. That is an example in science, but their work in sixth, seventh and eighth grade has given, it doesn't then just stop with science. They work with their teams, with the team practice, they work in the summer as science teachers, but also together with the teams and they look at crosscutting concepts. And they'll talk about what that means. For example, that there's cause and effects, that there's systems, that there are patterns in science that they're looking at. And then all of a sudden, you'll have Robin Drake say in eighth grade, say, oh, you know what? That aligns with some of the work that we do in social studies when you're looking at systems that work. There's a novel in literature that they might also be connecting with. And there's a lot in, say, the mathematical concepts that are crossovers. So that budget that we have, those finances, we support teacher work together in the summer and also during the school year, again, to uncover and find those links so that we're really enriching the experience of our kids in science. And that really, what I described, takes place in a lot of the departments. Some years get a little bit more focus than other, depending on needs. But in this year, it was science that I would like to highlight that we spent considerable amount to make sure that we were prepared for these changes that are coming. And then one last piece I thought was interesting is that in earth science, you have eighth grade, the, of course, in earth science in eighth grade and also ninth grade. And we had the opportunity where Jim Gulick went and he became trained, again, through the support of working with Dr. Colten Ecker and with Deb Kaye. And he then turnkey, turnkeyed his work to our eighth grade teachers. So again, the budget allows us to provide those opportunities to link and bring consistency between our eighth grade and ninth grade courses because we know how valuable that is as well. We still continue doing our extracurriculars, listening to what the work is happening with student government in the high school, sale is quite strong. Sixty students are involved. Again, they still work on the problem-based focus where we give them things to work on. I, to highlight, our eighth grade is broken into two groups. We have our eighth graders who mentor our sixth graders, and then we have another group of eighth graders that have focused on digital wellness, which is another part of the budget that has supported our work with our students on how to interact with the digital world in a healthy way, and is to give them a voice. So our eighth grade students came up with a phrase, it's their mantra. They actually ran some activities for X Pod, and they're starting to create opportunities in X Pod for teachers and students to talk about the pitfalls, but also the importance and the opportunities of digital world. And so instead of us saying to our students, oh, be careful of A I, or embrace A I, or, oh, you, it's like, it gives them an opportunity to have that conversation together, that this is why it's important to me, and for adults to hear it, and then think about how they can honor what's important to our students, and also guide them to use. Our mantra is noise, or E-noise, spelt backwards. And the whole point behind this was, all of it is sound for the kids, but is it sound that makes sense for them? Like, it's good noise, or is it like you're just kind of scrolling through, and it's not really adding to your life? So what does your interaction with the digital world do for you? So that is another point that Sale's done, and we're very appreciative of all that you've given our students and our kids, and hopefully that gives you an idea of some of the things that we're moving forward with at the middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Interesting to hear, like, from, usually we go this way, right? It's like, interesting to hear what's there, how we're supporting that. So here we go, at Wampus. So thank you to the Board of Education, District Office, for your support throughout, you know, all the years I've been here and what we're trying to accomplish at Wampus. So thank you for that. Each year, when we sit down and kind of think about what our ultimate goal is at Wampus, it's to prepare them for you. You know, we think academically, emotionally, socially, and how does the budget play all into that? We look back at our goals, right? We want our kids to become more confident, independent. Look for opportunities to lead. When we were at a site base back in the fall, we were asking a couple of teachers at Wampus, asking Chris a lot of questions about student government, so maybe something down the road for that at Wampus as well. But our goal is to ultimately prepare them for Critidin. Happy to report, again, this year, we performed in the top two to five percent in Language Arts and Mathematics state exams, top two percent in the fifth grade science. So hopefully, the sixth grade science students are doing well with all of that. And our continued success really helps us focus on student wellness, curriculum instruction, and this year, a real deep dive into data. Two things I wanna talk to you about, from the Wampus perspective, really is the student data, and the other thing is our work with the new elementary curriculum, Chairperson Megan McCully. So student data, specifically with our universal screener, and then our work with Megan. So STAR, STAR Universal Screener. About a year ago, I guess it was, Tim, we started looking at all the different universal screeners that were out there. We sat down in collaboration with Tim and Kevin and a group of teachers from Coleman Hill and Wampus, along with Peggy. And when STAR was ultimately chosen, it was also decided that it wasn't just gonna be a pilot. We were going all in, K five, let's do it. And I think that speaks to where our teachers are at. They saw an opportunity to gain more information about our students, and they wanted to go right for it. So we jumped right in this year, which has been, which has been very, learned a lot, but it's been a lot of processes and a lot of meetings to really fully understand it, but it's been a good thing. It's really enabled our administrative group and our teachers to run reports on students, to get specific information, indicate how their students are doing, what grade level standards are they meeting, where would they maybe need some extra work. Had a couple examples, I was talking to Megan McCully, actually, about it today. A good example would be this. Third grade teacher may see that their class is very strong in phonics, right? Universal screener, September, we have a group of kids that are very strong in phonics. So and then, when they're presenting a foundations lesson, they may adjust it a little bit as compared to what the program would offer, to make it a little bit more robust, because she knows or he knows that their kids are ready for a little bit more, right? Simple. Another good example would be in math, when a teacher is forming instructional groups. Students may be struggled on a unit assessment in multiplication. When you take a deeper dive into STAR, they're looking at products of whole numbers, and the students, a group of students are really struggling with that. They would then form their instructional groups based on that. So these are simple examples, but I think, even though it's the tip of the iceberg, what STAR is allowing us to do is take a deep dive into grade level standards to look at where kids may need a little extra help, or where they can excel in the area. And the teachers are having these conversations during encore with Megan, with myself, with the math and reading specialists, to really take a look at that. Right now, we're in our second assessment window, so now we gave the first assessment in September, and we're doing it second now. So now we have comparative data over time as well. So though we're in the middle of it, and why that's related to our building budget is because we're able to take these assessments now in the same platform and look at over a period of time within the standards. So it's a beautiful thing, that's just another data point for the teachers to look at with kids. Megan McCully, you know, what can I say? I went over to Coleman Hill at 5:15 today to have a bite, to eat with Peggy, and Megan was still there with Peggy, talking about, you know, curriculum and whatever else we were talking about. But Megan was there. You know, I don't know what she really hasn't gotten into in elementary curriculum, and I mean that in a positive way. You know, she's involved with the E L A Math and Science Advisory. She spearheaded the STAR assessment that we just spoke about, with Lisa at Wampus and Jean Marie at Coleman Hill, about how we're going to actually do the assessment. She reads, she meets with our grade levels regularly. She meets with our fifth grade departments, departmentalizations are going well, by the way. She meets with them. She's involved in our M T S S with Tim and Kevin, our No-Adam pilot. And I think one of the most important things, when I boil down where I think we're making a lot of traction and movement in elementary curriculum is, our teachers do a lot of professional development, a lot of professional learning. What's so important after that learning is to give the teachers time and space to kind of digest what they learned, and now make good decisions that are best for their kids in front of them. Megan does that with them in a very intentional way. It's goal-oriented, it's sustainable, it's across two buildings. That's the meat of Megan's work this year. And when Peggy and I and Megan and Tim and Kevin, whoever's meeting with her, there's just that alignment of the curriculum that's getting stronger. You just feel it each day. There's momentum behind it. So I think overall, I wrote to myself here, how am I gonna sum that up, what Megan's doing? You know, it's really been a transformative impact in some ways on the K five curriculum because of that alignment. And I think we're just at the very beginning of it. But again, when we think of budget, and that's an administrative position, right? So it might not be, hey, the Wampus budget, but it's the Byram Hills budget. But it really just has a positive impact of what we're trying to do, K five. As far as Wampus, we anticipate using the same programs next year with the Wonders, Foundations, Investigations, No-Adam, Character Strong with Annie is going very well. We have all the same extracurriculars for next year. Departmentalizing in fifth grade is going well. Megan just met with our fifth grade E L A teachers yesterday to talk about Fish in the Tree, one of the novels they do, and how we're posing questions to students. It's just a lot of really good things going on. So in sum, you know, I look back at our video that I wrote last year. Last year, I think it was the eighty-fourth day of school. Today was the eightieth day of school. You know, I continue.
You guys weren't aligned, were you?
We weren't, and we probably won't be this year either, but.
It's eighty, right? Were you eighty today?
It's eighty.
You're counting better than me.
Continue to be proud of, you know, the wonderful school community we have, the support, dedication from the Board of Education, District Office, partnerships with P T S A, Education Foundation, and the commitment of the Wampus faculty and staff. It's just impressive, and I think we're just gonna continue to move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And.
Interesting, all right.
Hi.
Thinking about that, teachers seem to be so receptive to these assessments. You know, I'm thinking back to when you were talking, I was thinking about the Common Core, and how.
It's a different world.
Your reaction is so negative, that this is gonna be a judgment on me and how I'm doing my job, and it's, you know, I'm gonna be, my teaching skills, my job, you know, are gonna be evaluated, but that was seen as a negative.
Yeah, it's interesting.
And you've managed to, I don't know if it's Megan or the way you guys are doing it, but somehow you've managed to.
I think that Wampus is a learning, growing environment, right? That's how I would describe it. And I think that Kim and Dave and I all worked under Evan Powderly. And Evan Powderly created a learning environment. You went to a faculty meeting and you learned something new, right? And I think that that's exactly what Wampus is.
And the teachers.
Teachers who are interested in learning, interested in developing, interested in collaborating, and, you know, there's a confidence in that when you get the support.
Yeah.
So to have Megan, to have, you know, as Kim said, at the middle school, to have consistency on the teams, to get the supports, to come in and help develop those lessons together, that gives you confidence to try anything, I think.
Yeah. It's great.
It's good stuff.
Hi. So I would just wanna begin, our initiative really is our children. We're welcoming in five hundred seventy-seven anticipated next year into Coleman Hill. And really, our work, our mission is the children developing their really cognitive knowledge and their perceptual knowledge. There's so much that they have to learn. And every single item in our budget really has to work in concert with one another, because we can't do things in a silo in Coleman Hill. The children, that child is at the heart of everything we do. So I just wanna kind of take you through all the expectations and demands we place on young learners so that they're able to go forward to Wampus, H C C, and graduate at the high school. So rigor and high expectations at Coleman Hill in a primary school setting, it really means providing children with challenging yet attainable learning experiences to promote their growth. Our goal at Coleman Hill is that they recognize that love of learning. They enter Coleman Hill a little fearful of that love of learning, but by the time they exit Coleman Hill, they recognize, I have high interests. Placing demands and expectations on me makes me wanna learn more, which makes me love learning more. When you put rigor into our settings, our teachers are really pushing children to think critically, make connections, and solve problems on their own. We're not in the business of solving problems for children. We're in the business of helping children learn how to solve their problems. The complex concepts in literacy and mathematics that are introduced are really introduced in an interactive, hands-on way, and our budget supports that through the instructional tools and methods that we give. And year to year, our instructional lines on the budget don't change. They really support the layers that go into really good instruction. But high expectations mean more than that, because every single child at Coleman Hill and going forward, we hold them to high standards by encouraging continuous improvement. Every single child is held to a high standards. And what does that mean? It means mastering foundational skills while at the same time building critical thinking skills. It's about creating environments where children feel safe, encouraged to take risks, try new things. All of us who have had children can remember sitting at a dinner table, I don't like that, I don't like that. We want children to get rid of those words and start saying, I'm going to try that. We want them to understand, because they don't all come in understanding this. Mistakes are part of learning. We're not in trouble when we make mistakes. We grow when we make mistakes, and those take lessons. These kinds of concepts are not isolated concepts. They're integrated in every single academic setting, from English Language Arts to math, to P E, to art, to music, because our children are at the core of all of those settings. And by integrating that rigor into every single setting, we really do lay the groundwork for strong academic foundations, where children actually start tapping into their interests, which helps them gain confidence to approach new challenges by being more patient and by being more resilient. Because sometimes young learners feel the pressure of us being impatient with them. And what we're trying to instill in them is, be patient with yourself, you'll get there. Every single child in our district is gifted. Some open their gifts earlier than others, and we're all here to support that journey. The budget also supports active engagement by providing materials and tools and enriching experiences like our field trips. Our children love our field trips. Our older children look back on those field trips, it's like one of the most exciting days in our schools when children are going out to a field trip. And by using those resources, we are teaching them how to ignite that curiosity and explore, and use that exploration, not only at school but at home. And they go home and they tell their moms and dads, they wanna go here, they wanna go there, because our goal is to foster that love of learning, and field trips do just that. Then there's the other side of it, structure. The budget, our budget supports structure, because it allows our teachers to have the resources they need to create these magical organized classrooms where children not only develop a sense of feeling like they belong, but they develop skills like time management, responsibility, and discipline. They discipline themselves by the way we set up our classrooms. We don't have to worry about disciplining them when it's just infused into the classroom space that they live. And those habits, they carry over into the home, but they also help our community, because we raise children who are secure in who they are as people, and also confident in who they are and what they're able to bring to the world. Our budget prioritizes independence, integrity, and confidence in every single setting through our character-strong curriculum that Dave helped bring to K five, and also our P B I S framework, which all of you had the benefit of your children seeing and learning when they were here at Coleman Hill. Every single student, whether they get intervention supports, special education services, or advanced learner opportunities through our enrichment programs, has time at Coleman Hill to develop the skills to tackle problems with determination and grit, and to not give up. And finally, our children at Coleman Hill are learning the importance of teamwork. No one is in this world alone. So we use the items on the budget line to support spaces for group activities, whether it's indoors, outdoors, where children can practice collaborating, communicating, looking each other in the eye. We have two ears, one mouth. We have two eyes, one mouth. We hear and speak twice as well as we talk. These are skills that are vital to success at home and at school. And all of that happens because of the remarkable work of our educators, our staff, the families that support us every single day, and the support of our leadership team here at the District Office and the Board of Education. Through all of that, we've been able to maintain small class sizes. We have access to high-quality learning materials in any setting, and we have these essential programs in academics and social, emotional development from all the budget lines that really work in concert with one another to produce the children that go on to the other three grades. And sustaining this level of excellence requires the leadership of all of us. And I think that we just continue to see our children thrive when they graduate, because it's not just through funding from the budget, it's through this shared commitment of how much we love this community, the care, the purpose, and the dedication we bring, because the resources really live in our heart and in our purpose and the commitment we bring every day to our work, whether you're a parent, a teacher, administrator, or a board member. So thank you for all that you do. Coleman Hill's a really special place, and it kind of feeds all that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys do such a good job of feeding, feeding the class, saying, like.
I've seen that.
Putting everyone together.
Kelly, actually, this is.
Yeah.
That's good.
Every kid in every school, I'm like, there's no way that anybody can. How are they gonna survive at Wampus? And they do. How are they gonna, how are they gonna make it a middle school?
Yeah.
And they do. You all really work seamlessly together. It's amazing, and we appreciate that. Our kids appreciate it.
Thank you so much, and I know this is a lot to come out, time and time again. You have so many evening events, many of you, as it is. But your passion for what you're doing is what's making all of this work, right? You could buy any program, you could buy anything, but you can't buy a passion.
Thanks for giving us the chance to speak to you.
Yeah. Great, now go home. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Good job.
I'll pop off the thing.
Dave will take some.
Of course, the presentation.
The floor, the floor.
Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
And they say, good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't teach up, because thank you. Hey, we did that pickup of the clothes.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so, thank you. Marking us up.
Well, you know, should we do a little? Okay, did anybody need?
I'm ready. As long as Kelly doesn't leave now.
Kelly.
See, I'm.
Can I show the sister camera on? Is the camera on?
No, 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 no.
Is the camera on?
It is on.
Oh, it's in the dark.
No.
Say dark.
Those are.
We're rolling.
Do we know, like, what the actual budget, like, did they, only one of them talked about going down.
So it depends on the number of kids. So Wampus would have probably gone up, because they're gonna be getting.
Yeah, there's.
Is going up?
Yeah.
Coleman Hill is probably going up.
Yeah.
High school went down.
Because they're getting.
High school's down, yeah.
Middle school went up, because middle school, eighth grade.
So all three schools are going, getting larger, except for high school.
Okay.
Slide.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna ask at this stage, I was gonna skip it.
Exactly. So this is all based on the Demond first report, right?
Yeah, which you'll see tonight, I'm gonna show you tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, great.
All right.
All right, there you go.
Next, the superintendent's budget overview?
Uh.
Or your first?
I got it.
No, Kelly's got it.
You want to?
No.
No.
Not before.
Sorry, sorry Jen.
Jenny, I'm used to doing it. I know.
I live for it.
We want to hear from you.
You gotta change the title.
We didn't. This is superintendent's.
It is mine. It's coming out.
We didn't have time in finance advisory to talk about who's gonna do the slide.
That'll be me.
I'll cover it.
That will be me.
That was yours.
You always forget your glasses, can you?
I have, I have hundreds of them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We are here tonight, January fourteenth, budget hearing one, five-year fiscal trend analysis, property tax cap formula, principals overview. March fourth, join us for the administration's proposed budget. March eleven, twenty twenty-five, we'll have budget hearing two. March twenty-fifth, we'll have budget hearing three. April eighth, we'll have budget hearing four. Um, and then April, wait.
Yep.
Yep, April twenty-second, we will have budget adoption. But can they stop having public comment?
After two.
After two. After three. After March twenty-fifth, no more public comment. May sixth, budget hearing five. May twentieth, budget vote at HC Pritidin, middle school, six thirty AM to nine PM. Come out and vote.
Late August.
Be informed voter.
Absolutely. Late August here, May twentieth. That's been a while. Okay, very quickly, uh, some of you have been bored since I've been here. It's basically the same presentation, different numbers. So I won't bore you with that. But just in terms of our budget process, finance advisory committee meets, um, you know, on a monthly basis going forward. Uh, reviews, uh, information as it changes, uh, based on the governor's proposed budget, which should be out in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then the changes in terms of, uh, what we receive information, health insurance, things like that. But we use the guidelines in terms of the board's goals, our enrollment projections from the demographer. Um, any staffing needs, changes, uh, and estate aid, things to that nature. That's how we start to develop the budget, uh, and use the guidelines. Tonight, the, the five-year fiscal trend analysis, really a snapshot in time. I talked to the finance advisory, uh, committee about that last meeting. Um, a snapshot in time, just to kind of project for the next five years of what it could potentially be. Again, it's based on everybody that's here now, pretending they're gonna be here for the next five years. So again, it is a snapshot, but it's a good way. As a barometer to see where we could be in the next five years in terms of the budget. In terms of enrollment, you'll see, uh, we have a, a projected decrease of one student for next year. Um, going from twenty-three thirty-seven to twenty-three thirty-six. Uh, you know, forty increase the next year of students and then it kind of slowly creeps up, um, to the twenty-nine thirty school year. Um, again, those students that are still are currently born, so that, that, that's a projection. Uh, but the demographer's report has been fairly accurate for the last five, six years, so, um, some good information there. In terms of next year, school to school, just spoke about this briefly. Uh, a small increase at Coleman Hill. Increase again at Wampus from five forty-seven to five seventy-four. Um, but increase at, uh, HCC and then the decrease at the high school, that, that bigger class going out and smaller.
We had a huge number of births in this area in twenty twenty-one.
Wonder why?
Covid.
Is that a covid thing? Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But when you start to look at the projections of where those kids are coming in.
It's true.
Not the same household.
Probably not.
Hopefully.
That's good.
Now it's okay, waste.
So as a debt service, uh, la- next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, our last debt service payment will be debt-free going forward. So that's the last time you're gonna hear me talk about the debt service. We refinanced that two years ago. Uh, and saw substantial, three years ago, and saw substantial savings. One more year of debt service and then we're free of our, our bond payments. Jen's slide here, uh, on the left is the percentage of the budget, on the right is dollar amounts. And what this is really showing, the red is the salaries, blue is the benefits. You want your percentage of salary and benefits to be around that seventy-five percent range is at that dotted line, that black dotted line. Um, and again, projections, you see increases well over that dotted line. Again, they're projections based on snapshot. Assumptions in health insurance, assumptions in retirement, so. Uh, don't take those as actuals, it's gonna happen. The budget in twenty-nine, thirty, I doubt will be a hundred and twenty million dollars, but again, this is snapshot.
Yeah, we've, we've seen that, we've seen that over, we've looked at slides from ten years ago and, and which said that we would be at a hundred and twenty million dollars in like two thousand, right? I mean, it's, it's a long-term.
And when I talk to finance advisor, I know, it looks scary.
Yeah, it's not real.
Yes, it, it's, it's a, it's a way to look at a projection. Fiscal trend, again, you wanna, ideally, when you do a budget, you want to have some surplus. You want to be around that two percent surplus range. The last two years, we've been very tight in terms of the budget, uh, so we, we haven't had that surplus. Um, this year's looking pretty good so far, but, um, ideally, again, you'd like to have some surplus to add to your reserves, uh, and things of that nature. We haven't had that in the last couple of years. Two years prior to that, we have had, uh, point seven one percent and a little over two that year, so. Um, going forward, like that. Now the fun part, tax cap. Uh, we're coming up almost on fifteen years of the tax cap. This is the actual formula that was given to us, uh, in two thousand and eleven. This is what it looked like. It made no sense. Um, in terms of the tax levy limit, you're gonna hear this all the time, I say this all the time. I want to speak the same language as you, the tax levy limit, that's what we present to the state. That's before exclusions. I'll get into exclusions. There's a maximum allowable tax levy is what you met, the maximum amount you can go to the public for a vote. And then the proposed tax levy is what you choose. If you don't want to go to the max, anything you choose, that's the proposed tax levy.
So we're really dealing with two and three.
Yes, two and three.
What's the max we could do and are we actually going to that max in our number three in our proposed tax levy? Right? Those are the two questions anybody out there would want to know.
Well, you can go, you can go over the tax.
You can, and then you need sixty percent.
Right.
Yep, yep. Absolutely. Good one. Does anybody know what the tax-based growth factor is?
I do.
I know you do. Okay. I was just.
I did a year ago, it told us.
This is a test.
That wasn't a live vote test. What if you was, you're doing a star assessment.
It's the tax-based growth factor.
It's based on.
You got it. So, so, so I talk about this every year, it's something you remember.
How much can your tax base?
It's changes in your, in your, in your area. It's changes in the buyer mills area, how much it increases a percentage. So the last four years, it's been around that one, I'm sorry, point five percent. This year it's point five two percent, twenty-five, thirty-six, if you look at that. We've been around that range in the, in the last four years and again, where this year. So in terms of the formula, you take your current year of tax levy, you multiply that by that tax-based growth factor. Again, different from CPI. Growth factor is changes within your area of new construction, uh, new assessments, everything like that. That's the first, that's the start. And then it's your pilots. On top, you take, you add in your pilots for your current year, you subtract your pilots for your next year. We have two pilots, Engel Berman and IBM. Small decrease from our current year of two point three five billion, next year with two point three one, uh, million dollars. So a small decrease in there. That's how the formula works. You add it in the top, you subtract it in the bottom. Exemptions, this is what I'm, I'm talking about. You take, it's your debt service, it's any vehicles you purchase, any improvements, capital improvements to your buildings. You take that and they subtract any billing aid you receive from that. Again, that's our buses, any, you know, debt service. That's your exemption for twenty-four, twenty-five. That's exempt from the tax levy, okay? And now you're at your, your allowable growth factor, different from the tax-based growth factor. Allowedble growth factor is basically CPI, it's CPI. The current CPI will be out tomorrow, so we just missed it. It's definitely gonna be over two percent, so I've used two percent. Two percent is the max, it can't be any higher. Although if you look in the past three years, CPI was four point two, four point one-two, eight percent in twenty-three, twenty-four and four point seven. But again, two percent is the max, so, um, that's that next step in formula. And that gets you to your tax levy limit. We report, I report this to the comptroller on March first, and that's before exemptions, right? So let's get into exemptions. Exemptions are, again, debt service, your capital improvements, your vehicles. It's on the left side here and then you estimate, I'm estimating my state aid. That may change when the governor does her budget the next week or two. I'll have a better number there. It's not gonna be much different from that ninety-eight thousand dollar number. And again, our debt service is coming off, we're gonna get less and less state aid. So that number's gonna be much different in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, and then any changes in your retirement system. There's the teachers' retirement system and there's the employees' retirement system. Teachers' retirement system right now is ten point one-one percent. It's gonna be next year between nine point five and ten percent. And then ERS, which is essentially anybody that's not a instructional staff. Right now it's fifteen point two. It's projected at sixteen point five next year. So, so, so if it was over two percent, you could put it in the formula as an exemption. It's not the case. So our maximum allowable tax levy is ninety-two million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. That's a max tax levy of two point four-two percent. Um, and about two point one million dollars.
So that is not our budget, but that is what we will be taxing the community, what we are allowed to tax the community.
Correct.
Not what we are proposing to tax the community.
Yep.
Cause that comes later, after we learn everything we need to know about the state aid runs.
Right, right. And the finance advisory committee will meet and talk about the tax rates, the assessment. I'll do my presentation based on the assessments on the town. Um, and then we'll talk about how that affects each taxpayer in each region. Okay?
I might get translated.
Yeah, you're good. Just as a reminder, this is, just a slide we do every year, where we were in terms of maximum allowable, what we proposed. Uh, and the difference and, and the difference in, in, uh, dollar amounts we could have taxed as opposed to what we did. The last two years, we went to the max. Um, so just as a quick reminder.
And we knew we would have to go to the max in those years that we were under.
Hundred percent.
Right? You knew, you may even have to go above the tax cap at some point. You know, that day may come, but in the interim. The money that was taxed was money that was necessary to be utilized.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a, a credit to, to Byram Mills, did a great job managing this. I mean, we got to the point where uh, it's more of a discussion in terms of the maximum allow as opposed to propose, so, great job. And then, uh, our presentation is going forward. Again, our next one is March fourth, that's a big one. That's, that's the superintendent's proposed budget. Uh, we'll have a lot more information. Finance advisor's gonna meet next, next meeting and discuss a little more on the budget and some of the, the information, so. Yep, next step. And then our budget on March fourth.
Well, we expect to have more information on state aid by the next.
Yes, so, so the governor's budget, yeah, she, in the next week or two, yeah, we'll know about state aid, we'll know about, if there's any change in information.
And we're hoping that it's like a real statement and not like last year.
Cause it dragged on last year to like eight dollars or something.
Yeah.
Well, last year there was, you know, the, we were gonna pull away safe, harmless, and then there was the whole fight back and forth. So we're hoping that we just get something, we can stick with it and continue.
Right, no surprises, no surprises from the government. She did state of state today, she said she was gonna support education this year in her budget, so all of that just means.
Yes. She's gonna support any chi- any person who's between the ages of what, twenty-five and forty-four?
Fifty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five and fifty-five?
She mentioned that. About free.
About free, free community college.
Free community college. Yeah, and twenty-five, fifty-five, you're changing careers, free community college. That's an interesting idea.
Changing careers. So if anyone wants to take advantage.
So, let's see, that goes again, it's gotta go through the legislature, so.
By the way, the community who's not in the room, the artwork in this room is spectacular.
It's always spectacular, yeah, that's true.
It really is.
And our art show's tomorrow, Thursday.
Yes, art show tomorrow, Thursday, that's right, Gina.
Oh, it's true.
It's tomorrow?
There's tons of students.
Reception tomorrow night at five, five at the high school.
Well, thank you for sharing your artworks. It's beautiful.
Makes such a difference, even in the hallway. When we don't have it and then when we get it again, it makes such a difference.
Yeah, it's nice that they all share, or else it's really difficult.
Thanks to our art teachers, thank you.
Yes. Incredible.
Alright.
Okay, is it for me?
Uh, to unfinished business, item ten, review of policies, ten point one. So there are five second read policies, Gina, and four first reads. How would you like to do it?
Are we waiting till the.
We do the.
Look, these are for this, yeah, these are, there are some first reads, um.
Do, do we wanna do the second reads, then we vote on them and then the first reads, whatever?
Sure. Perfect.
Perfect. Okay.
Any questions on the, on the second read policy, sorry?
No questions?
No questions, no.
So the pop.
Wait, wait, there's a question.
Hi Scott, oh Scott's looking right at me.
This is a loud. Sorry, it's loud as a ghost.
Well, we have to just repeat his question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a, a quick question, Gina, on the, um, visitors policy?
Yes.
And it was number four. Which is basically the provision that says that sometimes people could be allowed without require requirement to register. But I feel like we always do secretly require registration. And if it's during school hours, you probably would want to register. So what was the thinking behind that one?
Sure, so that actually, uh, let me repeat the question. Um, Scott was asking about in fifty-three hundred point six five, visitors to the schools. Number four, at the principal's, just, I'll just read it for everybody. At the principal's discretion, visitors attending school functions such as parent, teacher, organization meetings or public gatherings may not be required to register. And that's actually, that it has been in this policy. It really speaks to events like, um, theater, like, let's say we're doing the musical. We have people attending school functions, but we would not ask them to register.
Also, principal's coffee.
Principal's coffee, they come in and they go through Raptor, but at school functions at night, we may not have them go through the Raptor system. So it kind of leaves the door open for both.
Any other questions?
Okay, so I'll just read out the policy numbers and then we can take a vote. And we'll do them all together, that's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna take a vote on fifty-three hundred point six five, visitors to the school. Forty-seven seventy-two graduation ceremonies. Forty-seven seventy-three diploma and credential options for students with disabilities. Fifty-five fifty, student privacy. And eighty-two ten point one, use of surveillance cameras on school property. Can I have a motion?
No motion.
All those in favor of adopting these five policies?
What did, what did, um, Scott say?
Yes.
No motion.
Okay.
Give a thumbs up.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, great. Uh, and now on Gina to the first read policies. Forty-two five six point one, internet safety. Eleven twenty, school district records. Eighty-one thirty, school safety plans and teams and last fifty-five hundred, student records.
Okay, so I'll just give a brief overview. Um, again, the policy committee has been instrumental in, in helping us revise as well as using NISBA's models, um, for notification in terms of what needs to be updated and what's required. But our first policy, uh, forty-five twenty-six point one for internet safety, the title pretty much summarizes what this policy will be about. But really, the, um, the crux of the reason for the update is because, um, one of the, the pieces of the training that we're required to do. So of course, not only is our technology department monitoring the traffic of all our internet and our technology use. But we also have a requirement to train our students on appropriate use as well as our staff. Uh, we do have the acceptable use policy, so we can, um, part and parcel with this policy as well. But we did update it to include cite, you know, once upon a time, maybe our students were not involved in social media. Um, didn't have chat rooms as an option. And now we're just en- enhancing our training so that students, um, have more information pertaining to appropriate use. Um, and again, it just, it, it just outlines our responsibility in terms of not only monitoring the traffic of, of all our internet and technology use. But also providing the necessary training annually. Any questions? Um, school district records, eleven twenty. And a lot of these policies, I feel like in the last meeting and also here tonight, I keep referring to why some of the, the updates are not really that substantial in content. But they're also including everything related to ed law two D and it's, it's a requirement to incorporate that into our policies. So in terms of school district records, again, this is ensuring that we have, uh, structures in place to, uh, maintain confidentiality of all district information. While also being mindful of the FOIL Freedom of Information, uh, law. Uh, it outlines our retention and our destruction of records schedule. We continue to stay, uh, close to Article fifty-seven A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, which indicates how many years we have to, uh, retain records as well as when we're able to dispose of records. But the, uh, reason for this update, um, on this particular policy is the employee notification of disciplinary record requests. So in the event that we are to get a FOIL request, uh, for one of our employees, whether former or current. Uh, regarding disciplinary records specifically, we have an obligation to notify that particular employee. Um, I, my understanding is if it's a former employee, we go to the last address that we have. Um, a current employee, that we notify them as, um, soon as practicable in terms of, um, the notification that we did receive this request. And then in the policy, it outlines what a disciplinary record, uh, can, may contain. But obviously, it's anything related to a disciplinary proceeding, investigation, anything along those lines. So that's the reason for the update. Any questions? Okay. Uh, eighty-one thirty, school safety plans and teams. A lot of this is very familiar, I, I believe to all of you. But here again is a requirement from the state to ensure that our policies are in lo- are aligned with what the change in regulations are pertaining to our district and building emergency teams as well as our plans. So it outlines our responsibilities to create our three safety plans, one at the district level for the safety plan. Then we have our district emergency team and plan. And we also have our building emergency teams and their plans. Um, again, those plans are, are maintained, um, confidentially at each building for, for reasons. Uh, obviously to not share with the public on how we would safeguard against any potential emergency situation. Uh, but our safety team's plan is, uh, on our website, which is our public facing document. It outlines, just to, um, just to summarize, all of these teams have required members. For example, on the safety, uh, team, we have to have the board of ed- education, uh, representative. We may have a student, we may have a parent. It, it just, uh, varies depending upon the particular team. Our plans are all created, uh, to ensure that we are making every attempt we can to minimize the effects of any potential emergency situation. And then more, most recently, in terms of why this policy was updated, was to include any public health emergency. Uh, related obviously to the fallout of covid and that we're also in line with, uh, labor law. Um, what else can I tell you? Okay, so and then, um, finally, just in terms of the district level, we have to make sure, as you know, uh, in late spring, early summer. When we present a district safety plan, we have to have a public comment period for thirty days so that the public can comment on what we have put together. We have to have certain MOUs on file to ensure that our student resource officers and our security guards. Uh, it's very clear as to what their role is versus what the school administration's roles are in terms of student discipline. That those also be on file as well in the district safety plan. So again, this, this policy was just updated to ensure that the changes in New York State regulation, um, is included in our policy. And then last but not least, student records. Again, um, similar to what we talked about, school district records. Here again is the state's request that we include for any. for any of our student records, that we be sure that any information that is shared with third-party contractors, um, that is, it is in the best interest of students, um, in terms of their academics and the enhancements, et cetera, and also that the only information that we are sharing is included in the directory information. One of the changes that was made to this particular policy is that the, um, the state has, uh, now indicated that both parent and student phone numbers are considered part of directory information. It also reviews our annual notification to our parents about what their rights are under FERPA, and as it pertains to student information. Um, specific information that's deemed, again, in directory information, it's very clear as to the, uh, demographic information that is considered directory information. And also, as you may recall, in our district calendar, we have an opt-out feature, where if parents want their student, their child to be opted out of the directory, they have that option as well. And then finally, it, it includes provisions for any of our students that are deemed as homeless, in terms of their privacy as well. Any questions?
Gina.
Thank you to the committee.
No vote, no votes needed on the first reads.
Vote for the first reads.
Vote for the, okay, uh, could we have a vote on forty-five, four-five-two-six point one, eleven twenty, eighty-one thirty, and fifty-five hundred?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Scott, uh?
Hi. Yes.
Hi, thank you.
Good job remembering Scott over there.
Can't leave now.
Thank you, policy committee.
Thank you very much, policy committee, as always.
Thank you.
We are meeting this Friday, the policy committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, on to new business, eleven point one, first read for the district calendar.
That's me again. All right, um, so yes, this is being presented to you tonight, I all noticed the new format, thanks to Laura Copland, who spent some time, um, bringing us into a, a different visual, uh, just great.
I love that, like, because no one asked her to do this, she just said, uh, maybe it needs a refresh.
Nope, nobody asked her to do it, and.
It's much cleaner, easier to read.
Yeah, great job, Laura, tell her thank you.
Yeah, so a lot of organization, we love the colors.
I like it to have it all in the middle, too, I'm not on Flair's gum. She had a few versions of it, yeah.
A lot, yes.
This is good, thank you.
So, uh, similar to years past, um, we have a hu- this calendar represents a hundred and eighty-three days for our students and a hundred and eighty-six days for our faculty. Uh, the first day of school would be on September the second, right after Labor Day, and our last day of school for students would be on June twenty-sixth. The calendar also allows for three superintendent's conference days, which are August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, and then the third one occurring on March the thirteenth. All of the holidays that we have, uh, celebrated and closed schools for in the past are included here, of course, those that may fall within a particular recess break or, uh, an existing, uh, break from school are not indicated.
Um, some districts are taking additional, um, additional holidays onto their calendar. We are traditionally looking at the, um, holidays that are being noted as recognized by the state, and we're using those holidays, um.
This, this calendar looks very similar to this past year's calendar.
Yeah, it is.
Two weeks over December, starting in for Labor Day.
Right.
Very similar.
Right, and so like this year, an example of what John was mentioning, um, we have off on January twenty-ninth for Asian Lunar New Year, but next year, that holiday falls, uh, in the February, during the, over the February break.
Right. That's a weird holiday.
Right.
Okay, so we take a, any other questions?
And, yeah, any questions on that?
Comments?
Much of it.
Good.
Anything, Lori? Nope, okay, should we take a vote?
Yes, great.
Is it a date issue or just an alignment?
A format?
It's a, a, a format.
A format, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Beginning, do that offline.
We'll take it.
Um, can we have a, uh, vote on the first read of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Byron Hills School District Calendar?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Scott said yes.
Now he's raising his hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, great work on that.
Thank you so much, Gina, this is great.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Sorry to all the Coman Hill parents for the two-week break.
Sorry to all the Coman Hill parents for the two-week break.
They'll thank us later.
This will be a long, this will be this for a while.
They'll thank us in ten years.
They will, when their kids actually, when they need to break from school, they will.
They don't have great activities, there's always those great, like, climbing walls and things that their parents, they can do, gain independence.
Okay, eleven point two, demographers report, that is, you talk to them.
Yes. All right. Oh, I don't know why, that's kinda cut off, but. Just make it smaller. You taught me minus. This shouldn't be. Just tell me what the first word is.
Gain.
Gain.
Oh, gain.
All right. So, we could do it this way, too, Tim, we have gains in district enrollment are expected during the next ten years, with an overall increase of a hundred and seventy-eight students, seven point six percent by twenty thirty-four. Uh, the projection, I think that's, uh, right around the time where we have to have a full electric bus fleet.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. So, our projected enrollment, if you look at the primary K to two, uh, by twenty twenty-seven, will be up forty-four students. Um, intermediate by twenty thirty, so this is the same group of kids that are moving up, right? Uh, it'll be ninety students in the middle school by, in the intermediate three to five school by them, middle school will be a hundred and sixty-five students increased by two thousand thirty-three. And keep in mind that the demographer is also considering construction that's happening around here, but, um, they're looking at it based upon the Rutgers multiplier, which we know is not, I guess, effective, but, we, yes, we are growing. Um, this is fascinating to me, the number of births, if you look at sixty-one to seventy-four births in each of those years, ninety births from two thousand seventeen to twenty-two, in two thousand twenty-one, a hundred and twenty births.
In Ormonk?
Right, this is here.
Wow.
In North Castle, in two thousand twenty-two, ninety-six births recorded, so, we are seeing more births in our area. Um, and thus, we are seeing our kindergarten projections, um, continuing to stay pretty strong. Um, home sales, uh, I, I always find this fascinating, I don't know. Two thousand twenty-one was clearly the largest year of home sales with two hundred and twenty-five homes being sold. The median price was one point two nine million, uh, two thousand twenty-two, you only had a hundred and seventy-seven, and now in two thousand twenty-three, a hundred and thirty-three, but the median price of the homes increased during those two time periods. Which is interesting, yep. Um, large-scale housing developments, uh, this is always important and always on our radar, especially when, when Melissa, Jason and I are talking to the town supervisor, we know that airport campus is a hundred and twenty-five market rate, three-bedroom townhomes, and then fifty age, I don't think they're restricted anymore, I think they changed to two age targeted.
Right.
Um, that's been approved, and they're anticipating fifty children from a hundred and twenty-five three-bedroom townhomes. This is where Malta, uh, Rutgers multiplier doesn't make sense to me. Maybe if it were in the middle of nowhere, but not in the middle of Westchester. Um, Eagle Ridge, uh, that is, um, uh, eighty-eight market rate, that's the, um, three-bedroom townhomes approved. Eighty-eight three-bedroom homes, they're assessing maybe thirty-five students coming. Mariani, which has not started construction, it has been approved, but I think that they are going to be changing their plans a little bit, um, to include some more space, perhaps, so we're, that's kind of a delay, it's kind of unfortunate because it's also a ridiculous eyesore. I mean, if they had left those beautiful buildings, like, nothing's happened there, but anyway, come what may, um, I mean, you almost, maybe they want us to welcome construction because it looks so bad, right, that we wanna see anything up there. And then Bedford Road, if you've seen those, they are, uh, twenty units. Um, they were, they're built, um, and.
There's one by Crittenden?
They're the ones right by Crittenden, yeah.
Yeah.
They came out nice.
They came out really nice, you know, I remember.
Right at the end of that block.
I remember when Wampus Close was created, you know, it's between Bedford Road.
Yeah. Wampus Square, that's called the name of it.
Right across from a lead plaza.
Lead.
Yeah, lead.
Yeah, and I remember when Wampus Close went in, and people were like, oh, this is gonna be terrible, and it's beautiful, right, and it's, it's been a, it's been a nice fixture.
Yeah.
Um, I want you to see this, though, we have fifty-some-odd other homes that are being built, this is tiny, I only care that you see the numbers, right? But, so four homes here, one here, four homes here, uh, Mariani is in this, by the way. Um, six homes in this particular area, so this, there are fifty-some-odd homes. So even though we're talking big developments for the most part, these are homes that individual builders are putting in, um, there's, whoops, sorry. So there, there is a lot still to be built, um, and then, the, all of this does not include empty households, empty of schoolchildren households, that may turn over in the time that we're here.
Interesting.
Right, it sure is. Uh, here is our projected district enrollment, um, and you could see, if you could see that little shaded area, you could follow it down, that the hundred and eighty-two, uh, kindergarten students in October, the actual number, in first grade, we're expecting it to be one eighty-eight, we're expecting that number to be one ninety-three by the time they're in first grade, and then the numbers kind of level out until they get to, uh, middle school and high school at a young.
So, for ten years, we're gonna be under two, they're expecting, oh no, yeah, oh no, there, there's over two hundred, yeah, okay, yep. That's a lot, ten years.
And that's it for demographers report, I always find it pretty interesting.
All right. Is that it for new business? I think it is.
Yes, it is.
All right, on to staff reports, and back to you, you got to.
Wow, I have a lot, okay, so first of all, you're gonna think this is a whole thank you B H E F night, because it really is a thing.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, you know what, I missed something, sorry, wait, I missed something important.
Oh, what'd you miss?
Donation.
Let's go back to eleven point three, I apologize.
Say, wait a minute.
Acceptance of the B H E F donation for funding of the signature grant, I apologize, this is important.
That's okay, I was already on the B H E F, I think I'm on the.
Theater short throw scenic projector.
Yes, this is so cool. This, this short, short throw projector is the opportunity to have real scenes behind kids in theater that are pre-developed, right, so it's, you're sort of buying scenes to a movie, so if I want to do, um, something that takes.
Like you could see the skyline or something.
You see the skyline, you could, you could be in Europe, and you could have, like, scenery behind you, but the best part is that our kids can learn how to code these scenes, and put them in themselves, so they can be part of that, um, scene throwing projection, which is awesome. You could have kids, like, they literally look like they're in the rain, but they're not in the rain, um, and if you think about Billy Petito had, does such a great job at the end of the year, when he has the kids playing to a movie, like, it may be playing to Star Wars, and he pulls the screen down, and they're playing as you're watching the scene in Star Wars, that scene is gonna be projected behind them, so you're gonna be seeing the students actually doing that, so.
And this is portable for all the schools, so it can move?
Yeah, it can be used everywhere, it's an amazing piece of technology that you don't find anywhere.
That's great.
It's not gonna get, it's not gonna replace the building and the sets and.
No, they'll still build sets.
Enhance.
It will enhance.
Like on Broadway, they do it on Broadway, too, a highness.
Yes, yes.
And it loves it.
Pretty awesome.
Very professional.
Very awesome.
Yeah.
Great, so, can I have a motion to accept with gratitude this great grant from the B H E F, uh, the Theater Short Throw Scenic Projector, motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Can we use it for graduations, so we're all in Hawaii at graduation?
Oh, that's a great idea.
Nice, that was such a nice idea.
Can we all just actually be in Hawaii for the reason of the hologram?
Well, if it's a hundred degrees, it's quite a question.
B H F, we need a hologram now.
We'd be too proud to imagine we're here.
Right, as I'm saying.
Yeah.
No, this year, I wanna be here for graduation, but.
All right, now let's thank the B H F again.
Yeah, so, so much to thank the B H F for, uh, the community knows that the B H F sponsored a million dollars toward our life learning, uh, lights, learning action project, which is phenomenal, we know that we were able to get eight million dollars out of our capital reserve toward that nine million dollar bill, um, and the B H E F is bridging the distance of that for us, so, to do that, and to do this at the same time, and to see what I'm going to show you next, it's just an extraordinary organization, um, I don't know what else to say. But the, the second graders, um, the kids at, the kids at Wamp, at Coman Hill, wrote a grant initially for these imagination blue blocks, they're these enormous blocks that you take outside during recess in nice weather, and you put them together, it's almost like huge erector sets.
They're big foam blocks.
Big foam blocks, and you can create a lot out of them, but the second graders are using them to enhance their investigations unit on attributes of two-dimensional and three-dimensional shapes. Um, I really wanna thank Mike McHale, who's the BTC at Coman Hill, he's really, along with the second grade teachers, behind all this, so these are the big blue blocks. So the kids brought them into the gym, and they started measuring them, right, so you see kids taking all of these different blocks. It's a draft, this is a draft of the three-D printed models of the blocks that the second grade classrooms will get when the project is finished. So this grant was really just for kids to play with something outside and create, but now, it's something that they've taken inside, they're doing measurements, they're doing these little scale drawings, they're creating these three-D pieces, so that they can use it in their classrooms as well. Just like, uh, uh, this is what we love about the B H F, is that these grants are given, and these are grants that can grow, when you think that these blocks might be just imagination toys for kids outside, so I wanna just, uh, Tim, you might wanna hit that, so I'm gonna square it up. I just want you to notice that you don't see a single teacher. Right, this is just a group of kids that are figuring this out.
No, but they're learning kind of reading, that's awesome.
That's good, Tim. So this is just the, the grant that keeps giving, uh, we wanna thank the B H F for.
Amazing, awesome.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I happened to be at Wampus Indoor Recess, uh, one day this week, and so, I wanna also thank the B H F, this was a grant that was awarded last year, I believe. And this was indoor recess play toys, so, you had kids, you see those wooden blocks, some of the kids were doing Jenga with them, other kids were creating a ship, you had lots of Uno games going on at the same time, checkers going on, and, um, just, this is how we wanna see kids engaged during a recess period when they can't go outside and run and play, right, so, just another thank you, I love seeing these grants in action, and our kids enjoying them. This is a, um, recent B H F grant, and, um, if, when, when they do show this, I wanna also invite board members, if you wanna come and see it, it's an amazing documentary, showing how math plays such a crucial role in understanding major issues of our time. It does not get political, it does not talk about what the polarization is or anything, but it's just present in everything, and these are from the same people that did the Race to Nowhere, it's just, it's impactful, so, the middle school seventh grade wrote a grant for it, they're going to be seeing it, the grant only covers a certain number of kids for one showing, um, we're going to sort of pilot it and see if we really like it, if teachers eighth grade and beyond want to do a showing for kids or community, uh, but it, it's pretty awesome.
Let us know when it's.
Yeah, let us know.
Yeah, they will. Uh, fifth graders dive into tech fun, this is so cute, the Marty Robots, um, they were dancing to a tune, and there were weighted marbles that were traveling, all of this, this is in our tech encore class, and they explore activities based on interest, diving into coding, robotics and design, just pretty cool to see our kids, uh, getting involved in that at Wampus. Music showcase at Armagh Square, uh, freezing showcase.
Oh my gosh. Everyone was like dodging for the, I'm like, what is on?
But, but, I, and there's a little note on here, we really wanna thank Taza, um, they host this every year. And I know it's really beautiful to have music playing outside of your business, but they are also giving these kids hundreds of dollars in hot cocoa. You know, the kids are going in and using the bathrooms, it's, it's, I mean, yeah, it's very, very, very generous for them to do it, and it's such a nice community, uh, feel to, to be out there and to have them play. Um, this was another B H F grant, um, that, uh, Michael did at the high school, and students exploring Mexican printmaking through art and history, they were able to get the actual, um, the supplies that were necessary to do this Mexican printmaking, and then he took the kids to the Met to see, um, some of the actual work, and, and to see where the inspiration comes from to do this work, so thank you to the B H F for that. Oh!
Thank you, Steve.
Andrew Levy are one of three hundred Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholars, okay, he did like, this is pretty amazing. So, looking at different types of treatment, immunotherapy, individuals with, uh, head and neck cancer, instead of doing these invasive biopsies, analyzing their blood samples, um, to see if they could find through simple blood draws how they can improve a patient's experience while also getting the information they need on, on the cancer. So, I mean, talk about life-changing, pretty amazing, so now, he was awarded a two thousand dollar scholarship, and Byron Hills was also awarded a two thousand dollar scholarship, thank you, Andrew, uh, he doesn't get, he doesn't pay taxes yet, so he doesn't get to do that, it's like, sort of a write-off. Uh, he doesn't get, he doesn't pay taxes yet, so he doesn't get to do that as like sort of a write-off. Uh, but he can compete as a finalist in DC for up to two-hundred-fifty thousand dollars in scholarships. Um, his contribution to science is pro, is greater than any monetary amount that could be received for this award, so. Fantastic, congratulations. And um, we're also very proud of all of our students who are in that course, who are submitting and getting recognized in a myriad of other ways as well. Congratulations to Andrew, and a very nice picture. All right, we had Regional Social Studies Conference, this was a very cool opportunity. Some of our teachers, uh, Global Scholars Team, Kim Gowitz, Jen Layden, Lisa Squadron, they presented a workshop empowering global citizens. Insights from the Global Scholars Program. I love that we're sharing what we know with other school districts. And then we had our students, Charlotte, Molly, Paige, and Aiden, who did a session, uh, panel discussion session. And Joanna Lewick also led a workshop on incorporating simulations in AP US history. And just pretty cool for our history teachers to be out there educating others and bringing kids into that environment as well.
Amazing.
Awesome.
That's great.
I keep going. Um, wrestling team, this is so cool. So our wrestling team is a merged team, and typically you can't go to like the state finals as a team, but there is a uh dual meet tournament that they won, section-one dual meet tournament. Um, and this achievement advances them to the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Division-One Dual Meet Tournament, which is gonna be February first in Syracuse. So congratulations to our students who are on the varsity uh wrestling team. And how about this, a hundred wins for Nick Fortuno. That's unbelievable, significant milestone, look at how excited that is. And uh, this is remarkably, he is the third one in his family to reach this incredible accomplishment.
That's tough.
Would you say, I don't know, is there like a genetic, like, is there, I don't know. I mean, that's, talk about, talk about, uh-
Well, well-trained, maybe.
What a phenomenal, I want to see the wall where this, these trophies are, right? That is, that's incredible. No pressure, Nick, no pressure. Um, and we had Chris Ammonado, Con Edison Scholar-Athlete of the Week, pretty cool. What a great individual, and also a great athlete, well-reserved, yep. We also had our Bobcats of the Fall season, Maya Liznerzki from um volleyball. And of course Tyler Mariscot from football, and if you could just show their, their videos are less than a minute, but they're so impactful.
My favorite moments from the season are more so moments with the team. So I think winning homecoming was a big one, and I feel like that's when we really first bonded as a team, and having this whole school there, cheering us on was really special, so I think it's more moments like that. Being able to first lead by example, but then also being able to say the right thing at the right time, and being able to inspire your team to do their best and to help us meet a common goal. It's really special to me because it shows that I was able to make an impact on the school athletic community somehow, and just knowing that makes me feel really great and helps me reflect well on my time here.
Helps me reflect well on my time here, right? She speaks beautifully, yeah. And Tyler.
Definitely, first word that comes to mind is that definitely being an example, definitely being example for others. Kind of listening first, talk less, and be the first one to talk when nobody else wants to talk. I would have to say definitely the Pleasantville Homecoming game. On a kick return touchdown, that would end up with a defense stop. You would end up winning the game there, I think it was just our camaraderie. We just had a lot of momentum going into that game, and it's a rivalry game, Pleasantville. We had a lot of games before that didn't really go as planned, so this game is really big for us, and it really was one of the best feelings. I'll remember that like forever. It means the world, I, I think it's really just testament, like, like my work, I put the work that I put in. But I definitely feel like it wouldn't be them right to not mention my um coaches and teammates. You know, they're really the reason why I'm here now, um, they've been with me through every step of the way, so definitely shout out to them. Um, yeah, it's really an honor, though.
So just being like seventeen or eighteen years old and to be able to speak so eloquently.
Just so confident, too, yeah.
And, and so, um, grateful, right? Each of them is grateful, and they talk about like how, you know, they're not taking everything as their own, right? All right, this is great, sportsmanship at Byram Hills. Uh, we have a bunch of our students on here, Alex, Alexa, Ari, I'm sorry, Ari, Charlotte, Harley, Lauren, Lily, Mark, Nick, and Sydney, speaking up about sportsmanship and expectations.
There's no doubt about it.
Sports make us feel.
No, I want to see it publicly.
I love this game.
There's no doubt about it.
Sports make us feel.
Sometimes it's joy, sometimes it's pain.
It's all part of the game.
Since I was young, I've always wanted to be here.
When you're in the stands, just remember, we're all out here doing what we love.
So come out.
Cheer for us, support us.
We love it.
But never forget sportsmanship.
When we hear you in the stands, we love it, we're proud.
And when you're screaming at officials or coaches, we hear that too.
Respect the game.
Let the coaches coach, let the officials officiate, and let the players play.
Go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
He wants to take that role.
Isn't that great?
That's so great.
Uh, Brian Melso is a genius.
These videos are amazing.
Amazing.
They're ridiculous.
Promotional videos for us.
No, it's so much fun to see the athletes we know, talking like that, it's great.
Oh! The Bean is open! It's been open since we came back.
Really?
It's so exciting.
And I had a Chicken Caesar wrap from The Bean today, which was very good.
So what's the deal with The Bean?
Before you change-
Oh, shirt?
It's pretty nice, right? Jen, what's the deal with The Bean? Is it like open during all school hours?
It's open, yeah.
What's, is it only, like, is it open at the same time as the cafeteria?
It is, and it's also open when the cafeteria is not open.
What about late, like, after school?
Hmm, I'm not sure how late they go.
Because that was always a question, like, they wanted-
Yeah.
Or morning before school. Does the athletes have access to getting food, and they have to stay late?
Yeah.
And before, we'll check out.
No, she's not there yet? All right, we'll work on this.
We gotta go.
You know what, that's a big thing, amazing, nicely done.
It looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, pretty awesome. Well, welcome back, Bean.
Yeah.
Bean is back. Go Bobcats!
Mark, Mark's got it best.
He did. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh has it, but he's working on it.
He's fine with that.
On to deputy superintendent, on to Tim.
Sure, just want to give you an update on the New York State Education Department's literacy initiative. I've mentioned before and have done presentations on the, uh, the briefs that they released around literacy, um, which is putting an emphasis on requirements around instructional practices and curriculum and literacy. So we're getting a little bit more detail, um, on some information. So starting next year in September, we will have to uh fill out an attestation that says we are ensuring that our curriculum and instructional practices are aligned to the standards, aligned to the best practices that New York State is putting out, and that we review our curriculum annually. So we're in a good position, as you know, you've been hearing a lot from me about literacy over the past three years. So we've been working really hard with our teachers to do that exact thing. We started that on our own three years ago. So, but now the state is making sure that all districts are doing that, and that's, um, some new regulation. So the state defined these six competencies, we're not surprised by any of these, phonological awareness, phonics comprehension, fluency, vocabulary, and oral language development. And what they're doing is creating the best practices in each of those six areas. They outline those, and in which grades from pre-K to third grade, that we have to then assure that this is happening in our classrooms. So we'll go through all the details. I will put this slide up on our website, so our parent community uh can review this information as well. This is an example of their bigger document they put out, that for every one of those six sections, in every grade, um, they give us information and details about the instructional practice, they give us the research that's related to it, and then statements like this that will, can do a self-assessment to analyze whether that is fully developed, partially, or not evident. If it's not fully developed, then it leaves a space for action steps. What are we doing to assure that in the future it will be fully developed? So that occurs for each of those six areas at each grade level from pre, well, for us, kindergarten through third grade. So I'm working with Megan on a process that we'll be analyzing this with our grade-level teams. Um, but when we look through it, we're way ahead, we're, I mean, I feel like we're very advanced in all of these areas because we've been working on it very intentionally.
Sorry, Tim, it says self-assessment?
Yep.
It's the, the district's self-assessment?
We will self-assess, it's a, they, the, it's a tool that the state gave us so that we can do a self-assessment of these.
But it's not per student, it's for the district.
Yes, for the district. And so then by um September, we'll have to fill something out for the state that says we attest that this is all in place. We don't know what that attestation's gonna look like, they're releasing it um next month in February. So it's, um, they've released that, I'll share it with you. Um, I don't know how detailed it's gonna be. Sometimes the state just has a sentence and you just click a button and Jen signs it. Um, so we'll see, I have a feeling this is gonna be more detailed. Um, they're hinting that it's gonna be more detailed. So I don't know if that means we're inputting what our curriculum is, and at every grade level are we doing this or not? So that's something we don't know yet. But we'll know soon. Um, this is just more of the self-assessment tool that they gave us that we can reflect on. So I'm working with Megan right now to go through this and, and see where there's areas that we haven't developed yet that we need to start developing a plan for. And I'm putting some resources here, this district, uh, the state has a lot of good information on their website about all this. So I'll put this on our website so our community can look a little deeper if they'd like to. And that's it, that's the update.
Excellent.
Great.
New story about Zack the snake handler?
Um, oh, going back to that, yes, Zack. I was gonna say something about, but I forgot, but um, we are preparing kids to be even snake handlers, so we try to meet the needs of all kids' interests and passions.
I want to be a snake handler.
So hopefully we're teaching him to read really well, so he understands how to do that. And he makes the comment in here that he wants to be able to do snakes that are poisonous, so he wants to, so he can handle it.
And he wants to convince people that snakes aren't evil. That's so cute.
They're not, they can't rid of rats, they're not, I love us. So he says another reason is that my favorite snakes are venomous ones, like the inland type hand.
Yeah, I meant to look that up.
And I can only hold those snakes if I'm a snake handler. That's a point.
That's why it's the handle then, so when you have a call-
You are a cool kid.
I know.
That's pretty cool.
Be prepared, knows what he wants.
Okay, exactly, we're preparing you for that.
Terrifying snakes.
Anything? You're Doug Kelly and Gina, no?
All done.
Okay, as far as next board reports, uh, I have, there's no president's report, anything from the board members or various committees?
I do.
All right.
Um, PTSA meeting that was this, uh, this morning. And they've got, as usual, a lot going on.
They're so good.
Um, they are working on the, um, making some changes for the book fairs for, for the middle school, to try and get books that are, um, a little more written in appropriate, age-appropriate.
Dwayne Smith is helping out a lot, so.
Yes, he's working with them on that, absolutely. Um, and they're doing a lot of work on fundraising efforts and, um, some fun activities. And it's, they've got a lot of really exciting things going on. Um, and I met with, there's an initiative going on, uh, which is a combined effort between the preschool association and the, and the, um, PTSA to, um, come together. They're still working on a name, so I can't, I can't tell you what the name is because we just, we haven't come up with a name yet, but um, it's an initiative to provide uh support, parent-to-parent support for, um, children with, um,
Different learning needs.
Differences, different learning needs, different behavioral needs. Yeah, they're not calling a child, but, um, it's an iteration of what child was. So I met with them, they're gonna meet monthly, um, it's a really nice group of parents.
Do they meet during the day, or?
In the morning.
In the morning.
They're gonna offer, right now it's K through five, um, they're going to be, they're going to offer an evening Zoom um, session, which will be K through twelve.
And if you can ask them if they want, because our administrators were always invited to child, our special education administrators, I don't know if they, they want the assistant director for K five to-
They are, they're, they're going to be meeting with, with them, um, to talk about, you know, a way forward.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And they're gonna be meeting with Peggy, and they've got a bunch, they've got big plans.
That's great.
But it's a great, it's, it's, I've, you know, I've never seen them work together like this before, which is-
Oh, that's wonderful.
It, it's a really, I think they'd be, uh, the preschool parents were so appreciative of the guidance and the advice and the, and the support.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I remember being in that situation, it's just so much.
It's a lot to navigate. First of all, it's a lot to navigate, your child just going to kindergarten, forget about, you know, if they have learning needs.
Yes. Yeah. Exactly.
Right?
Work is a great village.
Yeah.
Very, it's a great place.
Uh, yes, just a quick one for me, I attended the, um, B H E F meeting, and as Dr. Lamia noted, they're really working hard fundraising to help us with our renovation of the high school. Um, they have a whole bunch of ins, Instagrams, which also Dr. Lamia mentioned, counted out. The math, uh, movie, which looks fantastic, we saw the, the preview of the trailer of it, it looks really fantastic. I think there's gonna be a lot of interest in that. So that looks great. Um, they have a bunch of community events, there was a indoor, an indoor play space event this past weekend, they have another one coming up. Um, they're doing a grit ninja event collaboration coming up, um, and as we also mentioned, the signature grant for the theater proj, projector, which we're so appreciative of, so. Great collaboration with them as well, with the district.
And life learning and actions.
Yeah, I mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah. More grants are on their way in, also, Tim is putting something together right now. I don't know if you want to, you're better off talking about it than me.
Sure, sure, I'm submitting two concepts on Friday. One is for, um, a parent academy for learnings, called the Parent Academy for Leveraging Student Success. Als? Um, so it's a, it's almost like a university for parents, where they can take courses with us. Um, and aligned to the areas in which we support like social emotional learning, learning uh literacy skills and how to help your child at home, so how does the brain learn to read? Um, executive function skills and supporting your student at home with executive functioning. So we want it to sort of be like a mini graduate course offerings for parents. And then similarly with teachers, we're looking at ways to really expand our teacher offerings, but to try to create some type of reciprocal relationship with universities, research universities and professionals working as a way to continue our teacher's education beyond um, just the credits they need to move over in salary scale, but really to enhance their learning. Because once you've been teaching for twenty, thirty years, you're not tied to that research anymore. So how do we keep that pipeline open? So we have researchers working with us, we're working with them, and we continue to, to support that, that reciprocal learning environment between the university and us. So I'm working on those two concepts.
It's approved or they need rolled out next year, is that the plan?
Yeah, we'll roll out sort of phase one of it, which is just getting started and then trying to continue to expand it toward the bigger vision.
Great.
Great ideas, things are coming down.
Anything else from many of the board members? Or any communications to the board? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, then let us vote on approval of the board minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-four, our last board meeting. Um, see if everyone was present? Okay, can I have a mo-
I abstained.
Okay, a motion, uh, for all those who are present to approve the board minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-four?
So much.
All in favor? And one abstention. And a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? No abstentions? All right, thank you, Byram Hills, good night.